Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Kilwine. Hey, guys.
Hello, hello.
We also have, hi, sorry, we also have Julie, Colin, and Jessica on our team. Hello.
Everybody.
We are so thrilled to have you here today. We have very, very exciting announcements to share with you. We're going to have a great big show and tell today. But before we get started, head over to the chat. Let us know where you are coming in from, what you're excited to learn about today. We are certainly excited to share all of this good news with you. I do want to do a little bit of housekeeping first. This is a weekly call that we hold that is free for everyone in Team Young Living. You'll find trainings here and on our YouTube channel that will cover everything from holding events to grow your young living business, managing your contacts, importing them from the VO so that you've got automations and support leverage pieces in place for communicating with your people, all the way through to creating and selling digital products, you guys. Get Oiling can do all of those things to support your business, whether you are just getting started as a brand partner, you're leading a large team, or you have an oily adjacent business and you just want to simplify all of the different tentacles of what you do and get them in one digital house. We have that for you. And with that in mind, I want to go ahead and put sort of a disclaimer out here today. We are sharing some really, really, really exciting updates. We've kind of been doing backflips here. I know our team has. Those of us who create stuff in the system are just kind of out of our minds at how cool this stuff is. But, but I want to acknowledge those of us who are here who maybe don't feel very tech fluent or tech comfortable. All right, so you do not have to, you know, engage in the, you don't really have to engage in the degree of technical, what's the word I'm looking for, complication? That some others may, right? If you see stuff that we create or that we share, you may just want the built-in theme that comes with your system. And you can get so much out of our system by just using that, your contact manager, events manager, you know, emailing and texting your people, you get so much out of that. But today, we're going to show you something that if you're someone who wants to dial in design or you want to, you know, to really create a sort of next level, more advanced set of automations and stuff to work on your pages, you're going to love what you see today. Now, if you see stuff today and you're like intimidated, I also want you to know that our team here can design and build stuff for you. So if you see it and you're like, I'd like mine to do that, but I don't know how I would do that. This is too much for me. All you've got to do is go to getoiling.com/VA. Fill out the form, get in touch with us, and we can work with you to build the machine of your dreams, whether it's just a couple of pages on your website or a whole, whole thing to work with your brand partners and all of the different stuff that you need going in your business. All right, so without further ado, maybe everybody here, just kind of a quick huge round of applause for the guy who is doing all of this because he's been doing this and you're about to see what all he's been doing. Yes, for Greg, everybody. Greg has built this platform from the ground up and, and every feature, including the ones that you are going to see today are here because someone just like you has asked us for it. Can you make it do that? And Greg has been like, hmm, why? Yes. Pull this magic wand out of my pocket and I make it. So let's, let's go see. Oh, by the way, if you're here and you have questions and it's not about what we're talking about here today, please do also put your questions in the Q and A. We are here to help you on this call regardless if you need that help and support. So we've got North Carolina, Missouri, Oklahoma City, Delaware. Hello, Colorado. Hi, yes, and lots of big claps and thanks for Greg. So Greg, let's turn it over to you. I am so excited for you to share all of this. We do, at some point, we will on the call today also share with you guys a sort of example of what a homepage looked like before and a template that you've seen before and how we've done a redesign on it. And by the way, if you signed up for this call, you're going to get that template, the new one, in your email today. So, all right, Greg, let's take it away. I'm going to move this over to speaker view.
Awesome. I'm excited to share. Yeah, hop right into it. So the, the updates, as you probably saw in the email, or maybe you didn't see the email. The updates are all about the page builder today. But of course, the page builder can do a lot of different things. So we're, I'm going to cover some of those areas that we've changed here and improved. So quick refresher, for those of you who don't really know what the page builder is, like right when you start your Get Oiling site, you have one of the nice built-in website themes that you can choose from. But if you'd like to build a custom site, you absolutely can. And you can even incorporate those built-in themes if you'd like that as well. Additionally, you can use the custom page builder to, oh, I guess we're supposed to stop video. Hey, I'll stop my video. Whoops, I stopped sharing. That's the wrong button. It's just me. Let's try pressing the right button this time. There we go. Okay, here's probably the video quality we want. But you can also use the page builder to collect, you know, you can have a form on there where you can collect information from people, multiple fields, multiple choice questions, all that stuff. So there's been some really nice changes to that, too. I'll just kind of hint at that and I'll show you as we're diving in there. So let me start in here. If you click on pages over here, this is where you get to the website page builder. You can create a new page or of course edit an existing page if you'd like to apply some of these new changes to existing pages. But what I'm going to do here in this account, I'm just going to create a new page. I'm going to use this homepage. First thing to note here is there is this new page template here called the Cassie home play, template homepage. That is brand new. It is actually from one of the templates that we had, that Ashley had designed before. I think on a previous weekly work session, we might want to refresh that with the updates that came. I think this new one that she was going to be sending out here, we could possibly do that. But this is a new template to use. I'm just going to grab this homepage, this homepage template here that's existed before. Now, first, if you haven't been in here lately, there's a little pop-up. It shows you, there's a little video, kind of an overview and everything you can do there. There's a help library article that actually has two additional videos in it down here, kind of on the bottom. So if you missed this, you don't want to maybe go through it again. There's three different videos you can watch here at your leisure in addition to some of the help texts that's there, too. If you're tired of this little pop-up, just click the don't show again button and hit done, and then you won't ever see it again. And this message will go away after about a month, anyway. But, okay, so first glance, when you pop in here, if you've ever played around with editing a page, you can see that pretty much looks really similar to what you had before. You sort of mouse over and click on things to make edits. And that basic functionality hasn't changed much. But you'll probably see some new buttons appear. There's six of them, actually. I'll look at these three here first. Probably this is like one of the most exciting features. I mean, there's a lot of them, but the computer, there's a, there's a way to preview the page before you save it now on phone, tablet, and computer. So if I click on computer, for example, it shows you the site as it would look to somebody who's visiting. So as you make changes on the page, you don't have to save it and view it in a new tab anymore. And the cool thing is you can come in here and click the other device button and it will actually size it down and show you what it looks like or what it would like on devices of that size. With a variety of different mobile device sizes, so you know, you may also want to try it on your phone. But this is a really good way to just kind of get a, an idea of what it's going to look like on these different sizes. So that's a, love that one. That is such a time saver. I've been using that one myself here. The other thing you probably notice are these three little toolbar buttons. There's a few different ways to edit now, but you can just kind of, you know, continue to do it the way you did before. But the real fun happens now, like if I click on this section, let's say I want to click on this to edit it, pops up. Okay, you can edit it. This is pretty much the same as it was before. But you can see now over here, there's this little style panel that popped up over here where you can edit the actual styles. And I'll go through these here in a little bit. There's some really amazing things you can do with that, you know, in addition to changing the the text that's in here, you know, like you could before. That's all absolutely possible. You can continue to do that. There is a way you can just, if you don't want this little pop-up to appear every time you click and you just want to add styles, there's a little style editor mode. So switch over to the magic wand and then you can just click on things and you can see it will update over here as you're cooking around on the different items. So you can just edit the styles if you want to go do that. And then finally, this over here on the, on this toolbar, there's a column editor. Now, when you click that on, what this does, it puts a little box around the areas that have columns that you can edit. Not everything has columns because this is just one big space here. But in the, in the areas on the templates that do have the columns, you can click on that and it will come up here with a column editor. And this allows you to do some pretty amazing things. Like if you just want to move these columns around, you can drag them around. That's new and you can resize them. Like if I'd like to shrink this one down here, let's say I want to have, so you know, I've got a second person that I'd like to feature there. Okay, cool. Let me shrink it down, maybe make some room. I'll click the icon here to copy and then maybe drag it around so it looks a little bit more like I would like, you know, person bio, person bio. Of course, then I've been coming here and change out the photos and update the text as well. But, or say I don't want that anymore, just go ahead and delete the columns and then size them back up to the way they were. So absolutely fluid, the, you know, like down here, you can just like pull these around and change the order that they're in. Just amazing how easy that is now compared to the way it was before where you had to like create a new section or duplicate the section and make the changes. And it was a lot of work to recreate that. Now you can just drag them around. And the nice thing is with the copying, you know, one of the issues people are running into before is if you had a column that looked perfect, you had to recreate it, like whereas now if you click on it, let's say that, I'll just pretend here that the second column doesn't exist. I'm like, I got this nice column. I want to make a copy of it. Boom, there's your copy. Awesome. So you don't have to go through and mess with the formatting anymore. You have an exact copy of what you had over there. So you don't have to start from scratch. So the column editor is really super fun. And, and allows you to really, you know, change the layout of your page quickly and easily. Okay, so on to some of the more fun stuff with the styles. I want to show you this. Let me come back over here. I'll just switch into style editor mode. There's also some updates here for styles. If you click this little pencil to edit the section background, this has changed a bit, too. It looks very similar to the, actually, when you're editing the element styles, there's some settings over here. But I'll start by showing you a few things here, what you can do like with this element styles. I'll click here because let's say in this case, maybe I have a different image that makes this text a little harder to read. So I want to create a little background transparency on there. So I'll click on this and it selects that now. And I can take this background color, maybe I'll just turn up the opacity a little bit. And you can see now you've got this translucent background that's on there. And maybe this isn't the best color, you know, maybe, okay, I could say maybe black looks a little bit easier to read and you can play around with the opacity, that sort of thing. Or if you want to take it up a notch, there's this background blur effect here, too, that kind of nicely blurs that out. And a really cool thing about this, so like in this section, it's got parallax. I'll show you what this looks like on the computer. And this may be a little choppy on Zoom, but you can probably get the, get the effect here. As I'm scrolling it up, you'll see that this little print or this fuzzy blur background sort of slides on top of the background image. So it's really, really fun effect. They close that out of here. So I'll go over this control panel here some more, you know, so I'm editing this section here. You can add animation on there like you could before. There's a variety of different animation styles you can choose. But so that's the one thing that isn't really new. It's just moved. It's in a different spot now. In, in this area, it's like you can, there's a whole bunch of controls to either fine tune or add some extra, extra something to, to your website. Like if you want to, you just want to play with the spacing a little bit, maybe you want some more padding on the top and the bottom on that little section. Or the margin, for example, like with the margin, that's the space above and below what you're working on. So you can fine tune that, you know, top and bottom, you can increase that or left and right. If you want rounded corners, these are really, they can add a design flair to your website, too. Normally they're square, but if you want to put rounded corners on there, you absolutely can make them as rounded as you'd like. And you can even, for example, control them individually. Like if you want to make some interesting shapes, you could do something like that by playing around with the sliders and really creating some cool and unique looking shapes on your, on your side here. So that's something you can play around with. Again, these rounded corners, they don't just apply to this one section. Like if I were to click on this button, I could customize the rounded corners on the button. Like if I just wanted a round button there to match this one section, but otherwise, you know, my, my default style is square, you can do that. Let me go back over to editing this section. Shadows, this is, this can be, you know, this can really help a background or a foreground item, I mean, stand away from its background. So if I'm editing this background section here and I want to add just a little bit more pop to it, I'll click on the add button here next to the shadow or the add link. You can see, but cast this tiny little shadow behind there. Now this shadow is super customizable. Let's say maybe in this case I want it white. So it kind of lifts it off the page a little bit more, given more contrast. And you can play around with like the blur intensity, for example, and it makes it look like it's glowing here. You can make it bigger, you know, with the spread, shrink it down a little bit smaller if you'd like. There's also down here, you can choose which direction it casts to. So like if you, if you want your shadow to go to the right and down, you could do that. You could also, you know, it is defaulted to the middle. So that, that adds a nice glow effect when you do that. And of course, you can change the color as I showed you, as well as how strong it is by how the opacity slider down here, if I want to increase it or decrease it. So can I just kind of a nice little glow? And again, this works on other things, too, like this button. Let's say I want to pop a little background shadow on there. It add, and by default it adds a black shadow color. But let's say I want to add a pink one. So Chrome has this little color picker thing. So I'll click on that. Maybe I'll add a shadow color that's the same color as the button, kind of dim it down a little bit, blur it with some intensity. And at that point, it kind of looks like it is really standing out a little bit more. It's very subtle, but you know, so there's some ways of really adding some nice, nice touches to this by playing around with it. Drop shadows are very similar to the element shadow. This works better on like text, for example. I'll show you the difference here. If I click on the text, this headline here, and I add an element shadow, it's going to put this little boxy thing under there, which probably isn't, that's really not a nice looking effect, in my opinion. But if you add a drop shadow, that will make the text glow. It like puts the shadow around each individual stroke of the font. And, and so again, you can, there's very similar settings here in terms of what it, what colors there are. You can, you know, add a, in this case, a red glow back there, play around with the intensity or, or not, you know, again, you can, you can play around with this and, and see what really looks nice for what you're looking for. And of course, the cast as well. The opacity here, this is really useful, or about enough, it's useful, but it's an interest, it's a visual effect where you can make the whole element sort of fade away a little bit. And again, it works on anything like if, if I were to fade out this, I can fade out this button. I just click on that button, I can take the opacity and kind of fade it in there. So there might be some cases where that's useful, like if you'd want to have a foreground picture or something that, that also fades away. Actually, before we get too far down, I want to show you one real, one really neat thing with rounded corners. They work on images. So this is huge. This means you don't have to go in and go into Canva or some other graphic editing program to put rounded corners on your images anymore. So what I'm going to do, I'll click on this and actually what I might want to do, one other little tip here while I'm at it, if you're in this element style editor and you just want to edit the content, you can double click on there and that'll open up a little editor. So you don't have to switch over to the other mode. So I'm going to swap this out. I think there's some other images in this library that are square that have also, yeah, so here, here's a square picture. I'll show you what this does now. This, the rounded corners work best on square pictures, although they work on rectangular pictures as well. And I'll show you both of them. I'll click on her, on this photo to highlight it. And then with the rounded corners, now you can just take the slider and drag it and make it as round or not round as you would like, just a little touch. So you don't have to go into your graphic editing program anymore, which is really nice. And you can even add, for example, like a shadow under there to make it kind of stand out a little bit more. It's really, really fun what you can do. I'll show you what this does on a rectangular image. It kind of turns it into an oval like this. And also, just like I was demonstrating earlier, you can uncheck this box. And let's say you wanted to make an interesting shape, you can do that with your rounded corners as well. So back up here, let me, let me continue down, down the path here to show you all the fun stuff that's here. You can add borders on here as well. Let me choose another color. I'm sure I'm going to pick something that looks not so good, but I'll just pick, I'll pick a color here and then add some width. That's kind of hard to see. I'll go with a darker, a darker one here. You can see the borders as you're, you know, you can make them wider, thinner, make them go away. You can even fade them out a little bit. There's a way to have the opacity in there. So the borders themselves are see-through. And just like a lot of these other choices, you can choose whether or not they're editing, or you can edit them all at once or together. So if you want to create, if you want to remove like the left and right borders, for example, you can create this interesting effect and that goes in conjunction with, in this case, the rounded corners. Like, you know, it edits the border to go with that. So there's so many little fun things you could do. Person could spend probably all day in here playing around with these sliders. I'm going to take away these the borders because they're really, probably, there's probably a better color I could be using, but position adjustment, this is also another nice one. If you just want something that's nudge it just a little bit, that's what this is for. So this is the whole section. I could move it left and right if I wanted to or up and down. But probably where it would be most useful is if you've got something here. Let's say we want this button or like, ah, would be really nice if that button was just a little bit lower. Come in here and move it down just a little bit, you know, so this is for fine, sort of like fine tune positioning. And you could, I mean, you can do some things, too, like you could make it move on the right and it slides underneath. But you'd have to be, you know, this is something you'd want to check on mobile, on a mobile device, just to make sure that this works, too. Because sometimes the positioning will slide it off the screen. And rotate, oh, this is a fun one. I like playing around with this one. You can add a little pizzazz. You can just take this and rotate the whole element one way or the other. You could even completely flip it upside down or do a 90 degree, 90 degree angle. And one little tip here, if you're on Chrome, I'm not sure about some of the other browsers, but if, once you've clicked on that little toolbar, you can use your arrow keys up, down, left, right, and it'll do a fine tuned angle change. So if you're looking for exactly 90 degrees, for example, you could use that little tip. I'm just going to reset this. And, you know, that works on individual elements, too. So like if I want to rotate the headline or tilt the headline just a little bit or the button, you know, rotate that the other way, like you can make some, make some shapes, make some angles that kind of add a little extra excitement to your page. And then there's also size adjustment. This one is really cool. You do have to watch out for this one on mobile because it's easy to make it so big it cuts off or gets put off the screen. If you do that, then you can always make a copy of this section and make one that's mobile friendly. But the size adjustment, this allows you to scale something up without having to go in and change the button or, or whatever it is that you're scaling. So I mean, this happens to be the button, but I can do the same with the headline. You know, you can, once, the thing about scaling or this size adjustment, it'll actually make it go outside of the box, which can be a cool effect, but you just have to play with it on the different devices to make sure that it looks okay. Width is another really useful one. This is, I think this is most useful for the buttons. Because you can control the width of a specific element, or in this case, the button. If I come over here and I want a button with, that's wider, I can absolutely do that. Just control that size nicely like that. And keep in mind, this is a percentage of the screen width. So as your screen gets smaller, it'll, it'll be a little bit, you know, it will sort of appear to change size. But auto, that's just automatically, you know, if I'm going to come in here and say, now you'll see the button gets wider. But this can be really handy if you have multiple column section like this, and maybe there's a button on the bottom and you want all the buttons to be the same width, like maybe you want all the buttons to be 100% width or 95% width. So they're uniform looking. It can be a nice aesthetic on your website. And then finally, over here in this element section, there's a background image. You can actually put a background image inside of an element now. We can also do that in the section, of course, as you see back here. But in this case, so I'm, I'll grab a, I'll grab a background image and I'll see if I can find one. I think one of these, I think these actually do have transparent backgrounds on them. So you can see, like, if you have a background image that is transparent, like it's a PNG that has a transparent background, you can make those in Canva and other editing programs. It'll put it in there and you can see the background in the middle shows through. And there's the new options here with the sizing. As before, like with the section, you can say this background image needs to cover the whole space, or maybe it should be contained inside this space. And if you want it centered or something like that, instead of left, right, whatever. But there's two new options here and this applies for the section background, too. I'll say that in a bit, but you can say this wallpaper, which is where it makes copies of it, depending on how many, you know, how big it is. If your image is really big, it actually won't, it won't wallpaper it. But this is really handy if you have a background image that is designed to repeat. Like sometimes you can get free textures online. If there's a background texture that looks like wrinkled paper or burlap bag or something like that, you can toss that in there and then say, set it to wallpaper and it'll repeat the pattern throughout, which is, it can be a nice effect. You can also go with single, if you'd like it to just be one single thing in the middle, you can do that. And kind of end up with a, something that looks like this, which is kind of neat. Some other people have taken, you know, like with the background image, they're actually not put this on here. Let's, I'll come over here and remove my background color. And I think I'll have to take off the shadow, too, because the shadow is still there. But now you have this background image kind of floating there. And if I preview this, you'll see that it too, sort of, it goes with the content and floats over the parallax. Oh, I guess I still have my blur on there. That's kind of funny. Still got the background blur, even though I can't see the background image itself. So I have to take off the blur if I want that to be completely gone there. And it looks like I somehow stretched out my, my background image when I was doing that. So let me change that back to auto here. And yeah, anyway, so you can play around with the background image a little bit and, and find something. There might be some texture or something that works there. Interestingly enough, this also works inside of a button. If you'd like to have some sort of neat little background inside of a button, you can do that. You know, this might not be the best one for this button, but you can, you can do that. And it even does the wallpaper thing if you'd like. So you can create some really unique looking buttons if you throw some texture on there and maybe a a shadow or something like that. I guess this one actually I think does have the shadow. I'll just reset it to this shadow here. So yeah, that's some, some cool things. That is actually another point about the buttons I'd like to make. So you can now edit these independently of your styles. When you're adding buttons, you know, like if I were to come in here and say I want to add a new button, there's a whole bunch of these that are defined. You can set those up under, I think it's, my color is in fonts in the menu on the left-hand side. You can set up your default buttons there. But if you'd like to have kind of a one-off button that's unique for your page, you can absolutely do that now with that. So that's a nice little upgrade. So yeah, that's, there's a lot that can be done. And I mean, like literally anything that you can hover over with the yellow, you can apply the style to. It's, you know, if you want to animate the headline, you want to animate the button, or if you want to scale this up or put a shadow behind something or like this, this would be a good, a good example of like, let's add a background color here. Maybe some rounded corners. Make it nice and round and kind of looking at it, it's like, well, I could use more padding on the top. So it looks a little bit more uniform. So I could play around with, with this to make it look just perfect. Toss a little shadow under there and maybe fade it out. So it's not quite so intense. Yeah. So anyway, lots of design possibilities here. I'm not the designer on this, but it can, you could probably explore this for hours. I'll show you the section editor, too. This is very, very, it'll be very, very similar to this element editor. So let me click on this section background. You can see normally, well, like before you've got your choice, okay, you can have a background image. You can have a background color, like this is a background color. We did move this section jump to name up there. That's kind of an advanced feature. If you want to link from, link a button or a link to a different part on the same page, I won't get into that too much here. But the background color, this existed before, like, you know, you want to change the background color, you can do that here. Chrome allows you to do the color picker. If I wanted to pick a skin tone out of here or something, you know, so there's all sorts of different things I could do there. But underneath here, there's a few other fun things that I'd like to show you. So you can add a background gradient now. This is really cool, I think, anyway. These colors are kind of loud, but of course you can play with these and they do blend with your background color. You can change the angle of the gradient as well. So like if you want to, you know, angle it just right, so it's got that fade in just the correct position, you can do that. If you want it to be a little more subtle, you can change the opacity. Like if you just want a little bit of a tint onto your background color, you can do that. You can see this is super subtle now. But you can, you know, increase the intensity to the point that you want. And of course, you can change the color. I'll increase these back up to, I think, kind of where they were, a little bit brighter colors. You can add more colors to it as well. So like if I want to add a, a third or a fourth or a fifth color into here, that can be done. Like if I want to add a, another one here, maybe I've got a dark blue or something that I want to put in there. And you can drag them around. Like if I want to reorder these, I want this color to be there. Or maybe I want yellow to be down here. And again, you know, you can play around with the angle. And you can even add and layer multiple gradients. So this is where it kind of gets infinite possibilities, possibly. But so add another gradient, gradient number two, it does copy the existing one. I'll change the angle on it so you can see kind of what it's doing there. But now we have like this crisscross thing. And maybe if we decrease the opacity and all these sliders, they'll blend together a little bit more because they do layer. But yeah, now you can see kind of like it's got a bunch of glowing spots and it's, yeah, it can be a cool effect. And of course, you probably want to use colors that maybe match with your, your brand colors and everything, but. The really nice thing about gradients is, number one, you don't have to create an image for them, and then number two, they work great on all devices, so if I come in here and preview. This and scroll down a bit, you can see that this. This background gradient looks perfectly smooth here on a computer. And then if I go over to the tablet, it formats a little bit differently, because it's going to be taller. And then if I go over to mobile, it's gonna be slightly different yet, because it is even taller there. So you wanna preview them all on the different devices, so you can see what they do. But they, they formulate, they basically fit your screen or your, your area, which is really nice. I'm gonna delete the gradients out of here, so I can show you the next thing. As we're going, and I'll, I'm not looking at the chat and Q and A just yet, there's so many of them, so I'll cover those here as we move along. But this is something that we've had a ton of requests for, a background video. So you can now put in a background video underneath. Your, whatever your page section here, so a page section can have a video. You can have more than one video on a page, but you wanna be mindful of. How much that takes, you know, because it's sometimes on older computers, it can, if you have too many videos, it can slow them down, but. Typically, the way that we, I've seen this done is there'll be a background video at the top of the page, and then there really isn't anything. Down as far as the background video, because it automatically downloads and plays. You can change the video here. There's a couple, there's one here that's loaded into this demo account, a different one, so I'll click on that one, just so you can see what it looks like when you swap it in there. Under this here, under, when you click change background video, there's links to two. Free video sites essentially, so we click over here, this is one of them, you can search for them. But more or less you just find one and then click download. And then you come over here and click the plus, select the file and upload it. And it'll, it'll pop it in there, and then you have your nice video that plays in the background. And of course, you can also layer on top of this, if I go back over to my element style and I highlight the row. Let's say I'd like to put a little background opacity over it, so it's a little bit easier to read, kind of like I did earlier. Maybe it's darker like this, and then perhaps blur out the video a little bit. Underneath it, so you can still read the text better. Of course, you could add around a corner, shadows, all that, all that fun stuff, and maybe in this case, I want a little more. Actually, no, this is the wrong one. I'll go over to the section and add some padding on the top. So that you can see maybe more of the video, padding on the top and the bottom. And then, yeah, you can see how kind of borders of the video underneath there, which is really, really awesome, so this is. We've seen, I've seen this on other websites, we've had requests from people before, it was very hard to do the background video before, but now it's super easy with this new little tool. Of course, if you don't like, you could just pop back over to the image. The video does wipe out your background color, so you'd have to, I'll pick a new color again, but. But yeah, and it. Let me come back over, yeah, I'll, I'll put in an image this time, so I'll choose an image, and there are the new options. Available down here that were in the other one, so previously it was just cover and contain. Cover, I always made sure there wasn't any background color showing out, and I have this red here, so you can see the background color if, if and when it shows up. But if I go to contain, you can see in this case, there's like a little red bar under there, what it does is it fits the whole. It fits the whole background image in there. And then you can wallpaper it as well. Now, this image is really big, so I'd have to shrink it down a little bit to make use of that wallpaper pattern. But you can see here that that's available, and then you could just have a single image as well. If I come over here, you can see that one single image, I've got it scaled down, but maybe. Maybe I make it bigger, or I'll just pick one of these like I did before, that probably be a better choice, and then say I want this thing centered underneath. It might not be the best option, because it's blurry under there, but anyway, kind of get the idea. So there's some new options for your background images, you don't have to always have it stretched. The parallax is still there. That is something that existed before in the, in the section, because there's so many settings now. If you're confused about how do I get parallax working, you can just click this link. It'll do what it needs to do, it changes the settings in order to allow you to turn on parallax. Background padding, that's the same as before, I was just showing you that. The, this, these sections are really, I mean, they existed before, but I'll, I'll show them to you here quick while we're. In here, the section visibility is the same as actually these buttons here, but. What this allows you to do is if you, you can turn off visibility on an individual device. By turning, toggling it on and off. So that you can have a section that works on a computer, and maybe you have to reformat it differently on a, on a mobile device, because it doesn't look. Great when it's stacked on a phone or something, so that's what you can do there, you could make a copy of this section. I'd like to show you the stickiness too, well, actually, before I jump to that section with. So normal is the default, what that does, it puts a little margin around here, but let me go to full. You can see it literally takes this box and puts it all the way to the edge. This would be a case that's really running up close, I probably, if I were doing this, I would say, I'd add a little padding on the right-hand side. Just to space it out a little bit, or maybe even padding within the section using this element of the, because I wanted to make that wider. Or not wider, but if I wanted to. Put a little padding on the right, that would probably look nicer, so it didn't run right up to the edge like it is there. Let me go back into the section element. So that's the, the section width. Let me show you the stickiness, the stick to top and stick to bottom, so I'll just demo this. So I'm gonna make this. Top menu bar essentially stick to the top, and then. This one down here, stick to the bottom. Preview and show you what it does. As I'm scrolling down now, it's going to leave this menu bar on the top, and you can see this footer is stuck to the bottom, so it's always going to be there. This is really great if you have like a call to action, if you have, for example, you have a sales page. That has a button that says, you know, get started now, you could put that button down here and this. Stick it to the bottom of the page, so that it's always there, no matter what they're doing as they're scrolling through, but. I just wanted to demo that quick, because that's been, always been there, but it's a nice, nice thing to get reminded of, because it does have some, some usefulness. I'll turn those two off. There's been a few other, a few other minor sort of like improvements, like if you move the section down. It's a smooth scroll now, instead of it was a little bit jerky. Same with duplicating, if I make a copy of that section, it's sort of a smooth duplication, instead of it was a little bit hard to follow and see what was going on before. So with that, I mean, that's, that's the bulk of these, the style editing capabilities. I think, I think I covered most of those. I'm gonna go into some changes here now with. There's some exciting changes to forums. You can now have, well, here. You've probably seen this pop up several times now, as I'm working on this demo site, as I'm like mousing out, there's this little pop-up that has a free download offer in it. That can now be put on the page, which is really exciting, along with, you know, can be complete survey. And there's some other changes related to that, that I'd like to show you too. So under settings here. Actually, you know what, before I do that, there's one other thing I remembered. There are some new page sections, so if you click. The plus or the add button here, and you wanna add a section. There are a few changes and a couple of new sections, so. The big changes are for the recent blog posts. There's a new four-column one that didn't exist before, and there's the existing three-column, two-column, and the three-row stack like this. But the big change with this, and this, this might be something you wanna go back and, and look at, if you've used this section. What the changes are now, if you preview them. They line up the headline and the button and the image as best as they can now. So previously, because you can see this image is slightly taller. And these have two, a two-line headline, and this only has a one-line headline. Previously, this blog section, like this image would have been right up here under habits one oh one, and this would have been right up under this. Title two, which then would have pulled the buttons up. Now everything is wonderfully lined up like this. But this is something, if you have this section, you do have to go in there and delete. Your old section and add the new one back, and then maybe reapply formatting, if you'd like to make any changes on that, so. That is new, and that is a really nice improvement visually, to have everything lined up. Okay, so going back under settings here, there's under page, there's been one change here. So you can continue to show the header and the footer. But now you can actually choose a custom page header and footer on this page, so. If you don't want the default menu, and let's say you have built something like this, where a little bar, where it is sort of a substitute menu. You could create a page that just has the section in it, and then use that as your header. And likewise, if you had, if I scroll down here, if you had this same business on page. You could use that as a footer on your page, and you can, you can choose that, and that's going to put that into your page for you, which is. The, what this is useful for is when you create. When you have a, if you wanna have like a sub sort of page or some, some page or something that's. A little maybe off-brand or branded to a specific product, you could do that, you don't have to have your main website header and footer on there all the time. So it allows some extra flexibility there too. Some of the other big changes, the, I'll show you this, there's a new section, actually, I may delete this one here. There's a new section, you can, I don't know if you've noticed this, but there's a new form tab up here. And what this does, it puts the lead capture form right on your page, which is really cool, so I'm gonna. Pop this in here, and I'll just do this one, puts in this little form tag. And let me preview it. It doesn't show up in the editor, but when you preview it. You can see that it does, it pulls in your lead that used to be the pop-up, the lead pop-up, and now puts it right on your page, which is. Really fun. Now, maybe this would be better below here. But you can see now, like, you know, for this form, for example, it is. Pretty big, like maybe you don't want it that big, maybe you just want it to be a single line. Well, you can do that, so if you go under settings, go to leads. Oh, and you can change your button style now too. So if you want something other than the default, I think it was the blue. Button that was there before, you can choose from one of your other brand buttons for that download now button, or whatever the label is that you want there. So what I'm gonna do here is, delete this, and. Like this, actually, I probably just. For the sake of time, I was just gonna come in here and clear the formatting, and center this thing here, and maybe make it bold. And so let's say on the form now, I wanna display these in three columns, and I don't wanna collect phone anymore, because. Maybe that's too intrusive for a lead pop-up box. So I changed this headline here, or the, the message, as well as the showing the form field in three columns, and now when I preview it, take a look at what it does. It totally shrunk it down there, and now it's just a nice little inline form. And if this plain, if this white is too plain for you, you can come in here in the style background and, and add a background image. Or, you know, you want all texture back there or something, you could, you could do that, and now this will have a, a neat little background on there. Any of the settings work for this, so you can play around with this to see what works for you. So that's, that's big, that's a really big change, the. Under settings now, if you wanna go back to a pop-up under leads, there's a, in a pop-up on the page, or don't show in terms of how the lead capture form shows. So that's a setting, if you do have the form tag on the page, if you choose one of those sections, it automatically switches, it's on the page, but it still does remain in a pop-up, so any pages that you have won't be affected. And. Okay, so the rest of this is pretty much stayed the same, except for. There's two other little features inside of the form fields that are really powerful, I think, and, and useful for you, so I'm gonna add another field here, so I can show them to you. New field, and. As you can see over here, there's this new save to column. Previously, anything other than name, email, and phone would just be sent to you in a notification email when somebody registered. And they would show up under past actions, so you could go look, and that's what the default is still. But now you can say, I want this field to go into, for example, street address, so if I change this to address, and maybe I've got city. State, whatever, so I can choose, like, okay, this goes in a street address, this goes in a city, this goes into state. And, yeah, it saves it right into the contact, and this is really useful if you need to collect shipping information. For something, and of course you can rearrange these by dragging them around like you could before. Now, there's one other thing tucked in here, which is, I think, really huge when it comes to automation, and this was a recent wishlist item, if I remember right, on a recently. Weekly work session, I'll just, I'll make a new field called my field, change it to like a dropdown list. And I'll come in here and edit the list. This has changed a little bit, we add, but basically, the, the basic functionality is the same. I'll just add a few items in here, so you can see, you know, this is very similar to the way it was before I dragged them around. But now there's this neat little tag button, if you click the tag, you can. Run, or you can apply tags. Run, start campaigns, and even run automations based on individual list items. So this is super useful for, if you have like, you know, you have a new subscriber to your email list. And you'd like people, you know, like, maybe you send them to a survey that says, hey, what areas? What, what things are you interested in? And you've got a list of five things. Well, you can have it so that, you know, maybe you wouldn't want a tag for all of them, or a campaign for all of them, but you could tag them, so. They can fill out one form, and then it goes right in there, and maybe even runs an automation, like if they're interested in a specific thing, maybe it'll. Apply a follow-up plan, and then you'll have to contact, it'll remind you to contact them in a day or two, something like that. But this, yeah, there's some really powerful segmentation capabilities here, to put people in the right buckets. So you know what they're interested in, great for new client surveys, all that, all that sort of thing, so. You don't have to use it on all of them, you could just have it on certain list items, like if there's one list item, you know, that indicates to you that they're really. You know, maybe they're ready to buy something, they check that box, then, okay, that could trigger an automation, maybe start a campaign. So you'd be notified of those sort of things, so, but that is. That is a really big, really big change, I think, and I think this is going to be really useful for streamlining things, so. I think, I know this has been a lot, and it's been a lot of time, but there's been a lot, there are a lot of changes, I think. Think I've caught them all. If there's anything I've missed that anybody can think of what we know, but I think that's kind of the. The bulk of it, let me, let me pop over to Q and A here quick, there's so much in the chat. Let me pop over to Q and A, so. Got a question here, can we edit the form buttons the same way, independent of the styles? Currently not, as I just showed you though, there is that new setting for the button style, so like if I want the form here. Let me preview my form again. Oops. You know, it does wrap, because I still got three columns, but you. If you want that to be something other than that default blue button, and I don't think this account has had the buttons customized. But if I preview it now, you can at least change it to a different brand color, so that it's not always that same one, so there's a little flexibility there. And we've got a question here, is the, is my colors and buttons only available? Okay, so there's, what I was talking to earlier, where you can edit those buttons, your brand colors, let me come over here. In the full menu here, if you click on colors and fonts. This allows you to edit your default brand colors, as well as customize your buttons down here, like if I want my red to actually not be red. I want it to be a different color, you can do that, and this would change all of the red. Red color buttons on your site, maybe I change this to yellow, whatever the case might be. I'm not gonna save it here, but. This would be where you would edit those. This screen is available on. Both the premium and higher plans, as well as there's a, there's an add-on to the basic plan, we call it our branding package add-on. That you can add on this capability to the basic plan without having to upgrade to premium, so that does allow you some more flexibility when it comes to the colors and matching your brand. Okay, a couple of other questions here, in a two-column section, I've accidentally deleted one. Column, is there, is there a way to add back a column? Yeah, actually, I don't think I demonstrated that. Let me come back over here, I'll click on the column editor. There is, so like, if I, if there is space available, there will be an add button, so the columns, the way the column editor works is there's. Twelve spaces available, and you can, you know, if I shrink this down to one space, you see how tiny that is, so there's like twelve little columns tucked in here. And you can see now, as I've shrunk this down, these, there's an add column here button that shows up. Like if I were to wanna add another column, that wasn't a copy of these, I could just say add column here. And you can see, it's kind of hard, because of the, the text color, but you can see that there is a new column that was added. And it did make it the full width. I wanna add another column, I can do that, and then these are, I have to switch over to this other mode, but then I could go ahead and edit. That column to match whatever I want, whatever the content is, I wanna put in there, so you can do that independently. You don't have to copy a column, but you can, you can if you want to, where you can create a new column from scratch. Question here about covering contain for background images. Yeah, I can demonstrate that here briefly. So this image is set to cover, that means it's gonna cover the whole background image, it's not gonna show the background color through it at all. If I go to contain, actually, I'll change it to a little bit more vivid background color here. You can see it's not showing, because it's hidden underneath the image. If I go to contain. What this is going to do, you know, here, let me change, like if I change my browser size, you get to see this a little bit more, I think. Actually, no, that's not gonna affect the preview, will it? I'll probably have to, let me go to the preview mode here, instead of changing my browser size. So in this case, it must be perfectly sized there, let me go over to the tablet preview. It must still be uncovered. No, I have it on contain, okay. Anyway, so you can see here, it puts this little, this little bar on there. Depending on the size of your screen. Basically, so the, the main difference is cover will always cover the image, but it'll probably crop the image in some way. Contain will show the whole image, but then it'll show some of the background color underneath there, so it depends on what's in your image, and whether that, you know, one works better. For the other. Cool, okay, so another question, Allison says, in essence, you can have a different look for desktop and mobile. Yeah, I can demonstrate that here briefly. Let me, and then go back to cover on the background image. If you'd like to, I'll show you what these buttons do on. If you'd like to, I'll show you what these buttons do on the top. Like if, let's say I want to have a, a white background for my computer or the, you know, the large screen devices. And maybe I want a yellow background or something for mobile phones. So I'll make a copy of this top section. And when the stop one, I'll just say, okay, I'm going to turn it off for mobile and tablet. But down here, I want to turn it off for desktop and computer. So you can see what I've done there. This is turned on for mobile. That's for desktop. So to illustrate this, I'll come over here. I'll change the background color to that yellow I was talking about. So we can really see the difference. Or maybe I'll just put a gradient on here. Like it, make it a little more fun. Stop a little gradient on here. Okay. So I'm going to preview this and you'll see now that that gradient one doesn't show up at all. If I slide over to tablet now or, or mobile, it puts that gradient back there because it's actually showing that different section. So that's a, a really cool trick if you want to. If you have something that you just can't quite get formatted to look correctly on all devices at once, you can make a copy of the section and then change a device visibility to modify that. Yeah. So, cool. There are, there is another question here.
I can take that one.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Hey Lori. Okay. So your question about getting your newsletter out. That's going to depend on what you're using for your newsletter. So maybe if you could respond back, let us know, are you using a content partner? Or are you going to be creating your own? Because the way that you send it is going to be a little different depending. So basically the, the short answer is if you have all of your contacts imported into your good oiling account. And I'm going to actually go ahead and put in the chat here, one of our recent trainings on our YouTube channel about how you can actually get your folks into, from your VO over into your, into your good oiling account. Make sure that everyone that is young living, that you want to receive that newsletter is tagged appropriately. And this video does show you how to do that. But then either you're going to do one of two functions, right? You're going to filter your contacts for that tag. And then you're either going to, to send them an email or you're going to apply a campaign. And that just kind of depends again on where your content is coming from. A lot of our content providers like Grow Workspace, Simple Grace Collective. A lot of these have campaigns. But some folks like to just write an email for a newsletter, which you could do as well. So that is going to depend.
Nice. I think that's it as far as the demos unless there's, I mean, there are some other questions here that are not related. But yeah, I can probably stop sharing here unless I don't see any others that are coming up.
Yeah. So there's another one here. Kristen and I have been back and forth in the Q and A talking about newsletters as well. So every month with Simple Grace, you can send an invite to sign up for tips. I want them to sign up and then have it create the tag to their account. So got you. Okay. VO is your, your young living virtual office. That's what VO means. Sorry. So the thing is, if you're using and Grow Workspace does this as well, Simple Grace has really great monthly content. Where they've started doing this thing where you send one email out that says, hey, this is my topic this month. If you would like everything that comes with this, click here. And if they're offering that, the automation is already made and you don't have to do anything about it. It's literally just a matter of sending that campaign out to your people. Right? And so if you send that initial message, the people who want those additional emails. So like the first one that they did was about women's health. And so maybe they've got male customers who don't necessarily want or emails this month about women's hormone cycles and things like that, right? But next month, if there's something about natural cleaning or pet health or something like that, they will want it. So you're basically just giving them an option if you're using specifically talking about Simple Grace in this way. So you're just going to send that initial email or that campaign out to everyone. And it's really a study and forget it. But, but what I was referring to before you start sending those emails. Unless you absolutely already know that everyone in your contact manager is coming from your VO. You're going to want to have tags, right? So maybe you've got leads in your system. You don't want to send them your young living customer newsletter, right? So it's important that you filter for the tags. So if you follow the training in that YouTube video that I put in the chat that we did recently. You import your contacts from your Young Living Virtual Office file. It's a CSV file. We've got a full set of instructions and you can get the slides and walk through step by step. But if you add a tag like Young Living or Downline or something like that, then you can filter for that. And then just send to those people and you're good to go. We should, we should do here pretty soon, maybe an updated training on permission marketing. But there are some other interesting things that you can do as well. Obviously not everyone that's in your VO, especially the larger your organization is necessarily knows you or wants to get your emails. So we do want to honor that and not get our emails sent to spam also. So we'll do more of that in the future as well. Although we do have one, I just don't remember the name of it, the YouTube channel. All right. What else? I hope that helps. Oh, here's some, Kathy has a question about forms, Greg.
Sure. Okay. So about the, the form tag showing, Kathy, this is probably a case where I can look at the form tag. I mean, if you use that new section, it should insert the tag correctly, but if, you know, maybe there's formatting applied to a portion of the tag that, you know, I can throw off how that tag is looking. So I'd love to see your page if you can send that into support or sounds like, it looks like we're almost out of time here, but if you can send that into support afterwards, I can look at that here and diagnose whatever's going on with the page and see if I can figure that out for you.
Awesome. You guys, I'm so excited to see what you all do with this. There will be more training on this, on all of these topics. All of these are like individual things that we could do whole individual sessions on. That definitely be on the lookout in your email and in the replay link for this on YouTube. For a brand new template that you can use if you want to use that new Jane. Template that we've created already that a lot of you already have access to. You know, with the video in the background and all of that. I will add real quick. If you have Canva Pro. They have a lot of short videos in their content as well. And actually the, the video that's on the back of that page did come from Canva Pro. So there's, there's a multitude of places where you could go. I think I think we've got some folks that are interested in making their own videos to go in the background. I'm just, I'm excited to see the creativity come out of this. I think there was one more question before we get going. Nope, that's it. Okay. Perfect. All right, you guys, we will be back here same time next week. If there are things you would like to learn more about, let us know. We're happy to create more trainings for this. And thank you so much, Greg, for making this happen. I know our team is just over the moon about it and I hope that you guys are as well. We're looking forward to many more sessions. Reviewing the work you're doing and just really maximizing the creative potential you now have with our system. We'll be back here same time next week, good oiling.com slash weekly work session. Britt, you don't have a website yet? Let's get you one. All right. We will see you guys then. Have a great week.
See you next week.